Alrighty, welcome back to the channel everybody. My name is not Raisen. Why is the music not playing? Hang on. Anywho, my name is not Raisen. Welcome back to the channel for another study stream using the bucket tool from the PLO Mastermind. Alright, give me a second while I figure stuff out. Oh, there you go. And then we should have some music there as well. Alright, let's dig into some more post-flop stuff here. There's the button, there's the button. Okay, let's add something up first. Actually, I want to see what kind of stuff I want to set up. So let's see what do we have. Downloaded post flop ranges. 3bit parts. What was that single raised part? Maybe like the hardest one out of position? And let's say we are cut-off versus button. Have an unpaired board. Yeah, sounds like the king ten seven. Kind of like that one. Okay. Alright, so cut-off versus button. Okay. So it should be that here we... Bear with me while I try to figure this out. But that way you can see how to set the whole shebang up as well. So pre-flop ranges, cut-off open would be the governing range, right? We take the PLO 500 again. Since anybody with a decent rakeback deal doesn't effectively play in a zoom 50 environment. So raise first in, what was it? Cut-off. Right. So we open, wow, whooping 32% on the cut-off. There you have it. Okay. So... Cut-off versus button. In a single raised pot. At PLO 500 and at BB and the board we'll add in there in a moment as well. So... I guess we can load the villain's ranges as well. It would be cut-off versus button. Do we already have this one? Versus cut-off. Hmm, no, okay. No biggie. So cut-off raise and the button calls. Download these ranges. So it's button versus cut-off. Oh, we already... Oh no, we have four 3bit spot, okay. I was just gonna say I already downloaded those, but I haven't. Close that, and there we have button versus cut-off. And he, the button, just calls. Now we have the villain's range defined as well. Cool. And now the post-flop ranges. Single raised pot, we are the cut-off, so we are out of position. Out of versus button, out of position, monotone. Let's go with unpaired and... There was one that I liked, uh... Queen of spades, ten of diamonds. Seven of clubs, queen of spades, ten of diamonds, seven of clubs. Okay, so that would be the... Check. The checking range. And then we have the betting range. Alright, there we go. Got the spot set up. This we should have. I wanted double-check this one. It's possible that I loaded the wrong one here. Just want to load this one again. Never trust myself with these kind of things. Just want to make sure I have the right one. Did we really check 94% of our range here? Wait, now I really am uncertain. Load the other one again as well. 75, yeah. Wow, okay, so... You know what? I really already learned something here. I'm way over c-betting in these spots. Okay, then let's add some buckets. Actually, let's go without buckets for now. Wow. Oh, of course, we don't have any buckets selected, so it's not gonna be very meaningful here. Alright, let's add some buckets then. Oh, that would be the right button. Okay, let's go with all the aces. That is interesting to me. Alright. Yeah, I think that'll do. Rainbow, that was... Yeah, that'll do. Alright, let's add like the strongest hands to the filter. So we have aces, Broadway pairs, rundowns, three Broadway cards. Two Broadways, three card rundowns and a Broadway. So a lot of stuff that hits the sport. And even then, as you can see, the numbers here don't really change that much. We still check way more than 90% of our range there. Wow. Wow. So I have been... Doing the... I've been playing this spot quite plenty wrong in the past. Jesus. Okay, let me update the study spot. Ollie. Go, open up the polls and then let's get to training. Wow. There you go. Okay, with that, I should have set up the poll as well. Cool. Alrighty. Training. And let's go with all of them for now. Ah, damn it. Yeah, thank you very much. I was... Yeah, I hit the mute button there. Alright, welcome back, Kivels. I don't know since when my mic has been muted, so I'll just run through some things I said a couple of moments ago. Um... Just seeing this right here. So the spot is we are out of position. We open in the cut-off, the button calls, we see a flop of queen ten seven rainbow. And we selected like the stronger hands we could have on this board. And yet, we check 93, more than 93% on this board. And this is a... Yeah, as I just said, a huge eye-opener for me. I for sure am not checking 90% of my range here. So... Yeah, welcome back, Kivels. Thank you for asking. Everything is absolutely wonderful on my end. Life is good. Looking at the beautiful second of March day. It's been sunny. It feels like spring here in Germany. I hope all is well on your end as well. Right, so we are... Where did the window go? Hater does it. That disappears behind. And you're gonna be crushing PLO 50. Well, I'll take some time. You know what? I might actually move down to PLO 10 for a week or two. Because I've not been happy with how the games, how my game has been going the last couple of sessions. And, um, I don't know. Maybe I'll move down and try to implement some new concepts and do a lot of studying. And then I'm ready to take shots at PLO 50. Bankroll voice, I could right now. I just choose not to. So as always, I have the poll up here. You let me know if you think it's... If you want me to like go through hands quickly. Or without a poll, or if I should put the poll up for everything. Cheers, Kivels. So it's interesting here. We do see that at a decent clip. And I can see why we have to double-gutter, we have to backdoor flush draw, we block another backdoor flush draw with the ace of spades. So I can actually... Yeah, it makes sense. Oh, it's very nice if you did check in in the first place, then if you only have a few minutes. Appreciate that. I'll do a normal playing stream later tonight. Thank you very much, Kivels. That's awesome. Cheers. Alright, so slightly similar. We have another gutter. So there it is. Cheers, Kivels. Um... Right. So... This time we do have one backdoor flush, but don't cover any other backdoor flashes. And our backdoor flush draw, we have three diamonds. So I'd say this is probably close to 100%. Very kind words of you, Chiching. Thank you very much for the eight-month resub and for stopping by. I understand that you were only stopping by briefly today. Thanks. Alright. Let's go with the check here, 100% of the time, and that seems to be correct. Um, you guys in the chat, let me know if I want, if I should put up the poll. Otherwise, I'd go through hands a little bit quicker. Sorry, I was a bit distracted here for a moment. Um... Right. So seeing that we are only c-betting... Yeah. It's not a bad point, legends. Maybe, let's go with the check here as well. It's a mixed strategy, so that's fine. Um, that's a really good point. Let's go with the strongest hands and see how those play. And then go to a different spot, because the main takeaway here for me, actually, we can... Where is that? Where did the other window go? Alright, we have to do it like this then. Um... Those, what these buckets do. Yeah, okay, so... Why doesn't it show the names? Also here. So the strongest ones, three Broadway, one non-Broadway, those c-bet 75%, 11% tops. That's a good point, legends. Thanks for saying that. That this is like going through the hand trainings here is probably not interesting, but duly noted for myself. So a whole lot of ollie, we... Let's go through a few hands without a poll. Just taking the strongest ones. And then go to a different spot. Let's go with like 12. I don't know, maybe 8. Okay, so that should be a c-bet pretty much. Wait, checks that even... Okay, so if it... Yeah, yeah, you're right, Legends Killer. It's probably no use going through this and just checking 100%. Not a bad idea, because even these hands, which I instinctively would bet pretty much always. If we have 95% checking range, death needs to be protected, so yeah. It's an excellent point. Okay, let's turn this around and stick to the same spot. Shadow Mania got the spot. The spot is... Well, it's actually down there on the screen. Right there. It's cut-off versus button, single raised pot. Um, so we are out of position. Yeah, that one, that I need to add that we are out of position. But I'm gonna change this part in a moment. Legends Killer rightly pointed out that... Just going with 100% checking here, meh, is fine. Check what type of anyone to be to bet against insanely wide fish, but... Can't cover that. Well... Yeah, that's why we checked shadow, exactly. The tool, well, I guess you could cover it if you have those simulations. If you run simulations against wider ranges. I believe you could do that in Monker. You could set it up like that. Okay, so this was a really short study spot, but nevertheless really valuable to me. So again, if we, uh... Take away... How do we take away all the buckets? We can't, huh? Oh, we have to do it one by one. So right now, we check 93% of the time. I think if you take away the buckets where we chose the strongest hands. That number went up a little bit even. Hmm. Yeah, yeah, it doesn't really change much. Alright, 100% checking it is. All right. One of the ranges you change significantly in real life. Um... How so? Like, what do you change? Shadow Manic, I'm curious. Now let's turn this around and put ourselves in position here. So it's button versus cut-off, in case we do have the same board for that. And change these ranges. Just turn them around, so the initial range is still... No, don't need to change it around, never mind. It's cut-off open still, raise first and cut-off. There we go. Which is what if I was small versus big blind? Uh... Check raise, that would be interesting. That would be interesting, but I don't know how to do that. I don't think there's an easy way to do that in the tool just yet. Or anyway, at all, really. I'm sorry, my phone. Give me a second. There we go. Okay. Can't you filter the checking range for following actions taken? Well, you could, but you need the simulation for it and... From what I've seen in the post-flop sims we have right now, they're not like... Reactions to what we do on post-flop are not part of the situations we can put in. So again... Post-flop ranges. Single raised pot. This time we are in position, so we are the button. Unpaired, do we have the same board? No, but, um... Now we don't have the same board. Oh, that's a... Wait, that's a different spot entirely anyway. Um, hang on, now I'm a little bit confused. This, what we might want to... Check out. I... Hmm. Just... Look it up, Legends Killer. Okay, um, let's go through a different spot. What do we have? What looks interesting? Button versus big blind in position. Cutter versus big blind. Maybe cutter versus big blind. What kind of boards do we have? Eight, nine, ten deuce. Alright. So it's in position, ten, nine, deuce. So that's the checking range. And see how... The picture changes. It's ten of spades, nine of diamonds, two deuce of clubs. Ten of spades, nine of diamonds, deuce of clubs. And that would be c-bet 75%. And then we need different ranges here. What was it? It was... Damn it, now I need to check again. It was cutter versus big blind, right? So... That means we have a cut-off open. Post-flop ranges. Wait, that's... Ranges, cut-off raise first in, right? And then we have BB versus cut-off, I think. So we could define the villain's range. We don't need to, but we can. Cut-off versus big blind. Do we already have that one? Nope. It should be that one, right? And the big blind calls. Cool. Now we have all that defined. Okay, and here's a different story. That might be a little bit more interesting. In position, we see we had 50% of the hands. Let me catch up with the chat for a second. OMFG, hey, welcome back. So we just had a first simulation here, or a first training scenario where it's actually the one still on the screen. Where we were out of position, cutter versus button in a single raised pot. And it turns out, we basically can't do wrong with checking 100% out of position there. Something where the training hands is not all that useful, but it certainly was useful to me, because I way over c-bet in this spot, I'm sure. Don't even need to look it up in my database. It's important, because the six percent are very specific, some of the betting of pure betting strategies are sure clear pattern. Alright, I'll look into that then. And start the training while I update some text on the screen. So... Okay. This tool is developed for Zoom poker? Um, no, 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 no. It's just that the rake assumptions are for Zoom. Right. But the tool itself has nothing to do with Zoom specifically. As far as I know. So the first question would be check or c-bet, of course. I don't, not even gonna bring the poll up for this one. This should be a check. Interesting enough to solve our c-bets this one every once in a while? I hope, man, I really hope I didn't set up anything wrong. Hmm. Let's see, why is that? Is 633. Okay, and it turns out those get c-bet some combinations. I... I have no comment on that. Need to bring this one back to the foreground. Sorry about the moving the windows around. Start look, okay. Yeah, I don't know, man. There's some solve voodoo right there. Oh, actually, he set up the trading a little bit differently, i.e... Change the threshold here to... Change the threshold here to Gosh darn it, I was muted again. Gosh damn it. Sorry for that. I really need to move that mute button to something else. This is a check in GTO world, it says. So Shadow goes for the check, huh? Well, I'm still gonna, I'm, I'm still gonna bet it just because that's what I said initially. Uh, that's, I'm not discarding what you're saying it by any means, interesting. But if you see, uh, we're the passive player, better. Um, we are in position here, we are closing the action, by the way. I think you were, uh, thinking we were out of position, Shadow, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Out of position, yeah, for sure. Especially seeing what we, knowing what we just seen. Yeah, c-bet then, right? So you have a pair and a gut shot. Um, block. One another backdoor flush draw. A little bit, so I'd say check a lot. Position here. Maybe even hundred percent. Yeah, close to hundred percent. Seventy-five, go with that. Yeah, sorry, I'll leave the next poll up a little, a little longer. Next hand. So at this point, I wouldn't be surprised if it's not a hundred percent check. And I'm gonna go with the check as well. Edison or Idisson, thank you very much for the follow, appreciate it. So the spot, as you can see down here, is cut off versus big blinds in the single raise pot, we are in position, we are assuming Pilo five hundred rake. One in big lines and the flop is, oh shit, I need to update the flop. Sorry about that. The flop is of course ten of spades, nine of diamonds and deuce of clubs, there we go. Okay. In position, yes sir. Damn it, did I set, set anything, did I set it up wrong here? Let me double check that, let me double check these ranges, man. See if I set everything up correctly. Because I'm having doubts, that's a seventy-five percent uh c-bet there? That's a gutter. Didn't have a pair either. Post flop ranges, single raise pots, we are in position. It is cutter versus button. And first is ten, nine, deuce, check. Why are you doubting? I don't know. Felt reasonable. We've got three blockers, back to flush draw. I think the three blockers to back to flush draw, I don't know if that's relevant, if you have a trip back door. Oh, I had a pair from the board? Did I have a pair? No. Okay, so it looks like this is set up correctly then. Fair enough, fair enough. Cheers, guys. Fucking hell, I was muted again, thank you very much. I, I've reassigned it to a different key, cheers. Good thing it's not a hundred and eighty second delay this time around. Jesus. So I was saying, maybe we could c-bet this as the weakest part of our range, blocking re-raising ranges, holding the jacks. So I'm actually gonna go against the grain here. And gonna go with a c-bet. No. Hundred percent check. Alright. The checks have it. It's queen queen six. So does it make a difference now? I mean, this time around, we do have a backdoor flush draw. And uh one pipire, don't block straight draws as nicely. But uh, pocket pairs, one pipire is what I mean. So I'm still gonna go with the check personally. I don't work here, but you can ask me anything. Who really knows who the Shadow Manic is? Alright, check, hundred percent. Uh, sort of an interesting one. Oh shit, hang on, what, what's the, what are these poll options? I thought we were using a different poll, give me a second. Check or c- Cent. And then we have c-bet. Cent, so. Dark pole, there you go. Everybody betting here with the top pair and the gutter and blocking raising ranges, yeah. Hundred percent even, cool. With a rap, but no pair, so I have a feeling what the answer is gonna be, curious myself if I'm gonna be right. Shadow betting this one. I personally am gonna go with the check here. Last time we s- did a, like, sort of similar spots. Um, I think the one big takeaway was that without a, a pair, the solver doesn't like to bet. Well, I'm going by what I, what I recently learned. Was slightly, I think it was a I don't remember the spot, it might have been a three bet spot. So that's a bet hundred percent of the time, okay. What was the spot where we saw a lot of checking with raps without a pair? I don't remember. Kipperi saying bet with an exclamation point as well. Was it a low rap? Now it was a bunch of raps, basically most of the raps we checked out, um, damn it, I don't remember the spot. Neno, hey, hey, um, the mastermind is hundred uh dollars, a hundred euros a month, I believe, and right now the tool is included, let me just throw up the next situation here. Um. Was it an inside rap? Now it was basically all the raps we checked out, but I honestly don't remember the situation, it might have been out of position. Which would explain it. Now you need to write a note on this. Yeah, I guess. Um, Neno, hey, uh, first of all, welcome back. Also, uh, welcome Kipperi. Um, yeah, it's hundred euros, right now the uh bucket tool is included, I, I heard that it might not be included in the mastermind always, that it might be an extra charge. And uh sadly, even though I really appreciate your asking, it's very kind, I, for the mastermind, I don't have an affiliate link, I don't think they have affiliate links yet. Midlow flop, second best rap. Yeah, um. Shadow, I really need to figure, I'll, I'll try to figure out off stream what situation we checked out where a lot of raps were checks. So it surprised me back then, but it must have been a spot where at least we were out of position, right? Okay, so uh I'm gonna go with the bet here as well, hundred percent. Yeah, it is on stream. So here we have the low rap. Remember what day, it might have been the last one or the one before that, I think uh during the last two, two study streams. So here. Gonna go with the check myself as well. Sometimes gets bet, but mostly gets checked. EV, pretty similar here. All over a little bit. And this time we, well, pretty similar, we have a three card rap. So if the last one was a bet, this one has to be a bet as well. Hundred percent. This time we have a top pair and oh, the jack is kinda nice. Yeah, I think that's true, the other wasn't, other one didn't have a backdoor either. So I'm gonna go with the check here myself, Shadow would bet this, no fear. Wouldn't be surprised if there's some betting going on, actually a hundred percent betting, wow. He just, he does love that song, I'm growing par- very partial to it too, it's funny as hell. Alright, so again, holding the jack. We block stuff that can re-race us a little bit. And probably look up the suit. I don't think it works without having selected buckets, oh, never mind, it does. So it's one hundred and seventy-one hands, we c-bet seventy-five percent of the hands, which ones do we check? Okay, up here we have the flop. Backdoor not flush draw. Hmm, just thinking how I can, if I can filter this somehow. Um, I guess we check it with the uh, yeah, we do check it uh often enough with the backdoor flush draw. We have clubs, here we have, yeah, the backdoor uh nut flush draw gets checked, without the backdoor nut flush draw it apparently gets uh bet at a decent clip. So where does it become more of a c-bet? Let's see. We unblock, apparently where we unblock other backdoor flush draws. It's a nice bluffing hand, yeah. Yeah, okay, so it's a c-bet with the weakest part of her range, right? Yeah, triple suited or um blockers to backdoor nut flushes. Checks with uh two backdoor nut flush draw often, yeah, I saw that too. Interesting. Okay. It's queen seven six, so we hit absolutely nothing from the board, have some, some blockers at the gutter, I guess. And I would think this one doesn't have many surprises, but you know, I've been wrong in the past. Sometimes gets c-bet. There's a bluff note out. Thank you, with the putt 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 putt. Alright, so I, I don't think we need a poll for this one. I think we, we have plenty of bluffs here, we don't need to add something like this, right? Wow, shows you, shows you what I know, I should just be starting the poll every time. Okay, so we have the gutter, I guess. Now, so this spot is turning out to be more interesting than I thought. By four. No backdoor, no gutter to get raised off, yeah. You're still correct, it's mixed, yeah, sure, okay, but it was uh more way towards betting. So I'll, I'll just put the poll up for everything then. Seeing that some spots are more interesting than I thought. So it turns out we have a lot of uh bluff bets here. Will this make the cut? Okay. Yeah, no gut shot, yeah. Having some, I could even bluffing is definitely preferred, right? So this one should just be a check. I really hope the solver doesn't shock me to my core again. Going with like a mixed betting here. No, okay, phew. Turned it, put it whiskey down again. Um. Block a backdoor, or we have a backdoor nut flush draw. Ace five four four is an open from the cutter for sure, yeah. Let me double check, but I'm pretty surprised if it's not. Like, you know, might as well double check, maybe I put something up incorrectly. Maybe added some incorrect ranges or whatever. Check in a matrix. While we go to the next hand, so this uh should be a check then. Even that one gets bet a little bit, um. So with the maniac, yeah, I'm starting to uh see that. Yeah, personally, I'm gonna ignore that, the c-betting here. I don't know about you. Or interesting one. So let me check out the, what was it, ace five four four? But I checked similar hands out in the past and it's an ace blocker suited somewhat connected, not too bad. Oh, you mean uh raising the ace five four four? Yeah, and it's a race call at that. So mixed so far between checking and betting. We're up against, we're up against the big blind. Hmm. Can't make up my mind about this one. I'd like kind, I like both every once in a while, I guess. Bluffing this all day, Shadow Manic says. I don't know about this one, I'll go with the check. So EV is pretty similar, but the solver clearly prefers betting here. A question on this board, how often do you remain best, I guess? Okay, this time we have the open ender. Seven really doesn't do anything for us except that blocks uh lower raps, I guess. Yeah, run outs are poor, yeah. I think that's probably the main, the main point there. We can, that's a good point. I didn't think of that, yeah. We have excellent future blockers, that's true. Have a king, a, a jack. A roll off. Even an eight. We have a set four four, so my equity you got, you have to give up if you get raised here. Um. Okay, before we continue with this spot. Let's check out queen hands that don't have, uh hang on, B, I have syntax for that, for not double paired. Double pair, double paired. Point, uh, oh, that should be it. Uh, again, the dotted out cards are queens. These are the only cards that get got dotted out. It's due to an issue on my end. I could uh fix it, but then doesn't matter, just take it at face value. So what are we checking? With the open ender. We're checking it. Queen, queen, jack, seven, um. Okay. Is queen, queen, jack. Pure open enders. Usually when we hit, get a check raised, this is when we have a turn dependent hand. Or doesn't fit that category. Interesting point. So we bet the best ones that are not double paired. Um, like with the wrap around. With the king, where we have a rap ourselves. Queen ten nine, where we already have two pair, the queens. Jack nine with the open another pair from the board, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Queen, queen, did I see something with a deuce here just now? Yeah, queen, queen, jack, deuce. Interesting, Devon has two backdoor flushes though. A busy lady. Thank you very much for the, for taking the time to follow. Thank you. And he has no ace, so kings in his range a lot, that's a good point, yeah. Queen four four doesn't really benefit from seeing the turn, yeah, makes a lot of sense. Could turn it eighty percent of the time and also check down. Alright. Oh, to raise, yeah, but I, I think what Kipari uh is saying that we're not getting raised all that often is is definitely a factor. Yeah, and the future straight blockers on the, with the queen queen are pretty strong as well. Alright, so about this one. Made from population, but it's a GTO quiz, yeah, hmm. So with the pure open ender, uh blocking the low rap a little bit, I'd imagine we don't need to bet this, we have a lot of uh bets, this is a little bit like quote unquote too strong to bet, I would say, yeah, cool. QTO faults a hundred fifty percent of the time, yeah. Okay, a weak one, a really weak one here. Will we see another mixed strategy where the solver balances his ranges? His, it's I know they're sophisticated, but we can't call it a he yet. So naturally I'm gonna go with the check as well. Will we be surprised again? Is there be, is there gonna be some betting in here? Well, we don't have a backdoor flush draw. That might actually might. So yeah, this might actually be a bluff sometimes, seeing we happily give up if we get raised. Wow, you made a teddy emo, a teddy emote? That's a good one, Gabri. That's a good one. And it is very much mixed. Let's just kill a right on the money here. It's a pure bluff. We could turn some stuff where we can, you know, check behind and not continue to bluff, like a four. Um, a jack, a king. And he's obviously, alright, interesting. On to the next one. Can check, is check five three? Yeah, sure. It's a bet hundred percent of the time. Obviously he has a pure bluff again. And here it doesn't matter, the suits, just hundred percent of the time. Let's go with something like ace, jack, seven. Nah, seven, eight is, um, like six, five, maybe? Bet, let's go with hundred percent. Ninety seven percent is good enough. Alright, back to this hand where we have a top pair and um a gutter to the nuts. Decent blockers to everything. Um. Kind of sucks if you get erased on this one, so. Always mixed now, yeah, probably. I wouldn't be, yeah, this is definitely gonna, gonna be mixed as well. I'm curious to see how it's gonna be weighed. Oh, sorry, I didn't start the poll on this one, so if you want to vote, uh do it now. Did click that button. I'm gonna go with the check. Only maniacs deal in absolutes. I always liked that Star Wars quote. That's from a movie. You're getting this close to a channel ban, Shadow Manic, calling Star Wars. It's from a movie. I, I don't know, might have been Scream or whatever. It's Star Wars. It's not a movie. Only uses hundred percent frequencies. Hey, DeBoris, good to see you. So very much mix sixty forty. What's the Star Wars? I can't even. I can't even. Aces with two backdoor flushes and a queen. Guess the six is sort of relevant as well. In position, do we check or do we see bet seventy five percent? One or two more one. Alright, let's go for the check. And again, um very mixed here. There's plenty of betting going on as well. Okay. Check six, six. Blocking low reps quite nicely, holding the gutter, backdoor flush draw. And we're up against the big line, so the, the widest range we could be up against. Shadow Manic betting, I'm coming around to betting just based on what we've seen so far. I wouldn't be surprised if it's more, more of a bet than not. Again, I would be, I, I would be shocked if it's hundred percent seabed, but that wouldn't be the first time either. Alright, are there any king, jack, six, six that get bet at all? No, ninety nine point one percent makes this, no. So I wonder why this is. Why do you guys think that, like other hands we bet as a bluff and this one we never, we never bet? Is it because of the combination, um, backdoor flush draw and the gutter to nuts? I guess we have nice future blockers as well. Jack six, five. That's an interesting question too. Very much mixed then. Bedding for the sea, weaker. No, not just, uh, hang on. Sort by. Okay, so the weaker double suited gets seabed hundred percent of the time? Who wants to have a weak backdoor flush draw? And with all the rest, it is very much mixed here. So anybody have any idea why this is not being bluffed? Reverse blocking reasons. Oh, so yeah, yeah. Yeah, but that I get what you mean, yeah, that could be a good point, makes it more likely that, well, it makes it less likely that he has a six in his hand. And then maybe he could uh hit this board a little bit better because of that. Well, it's just an outcome of balancing that might very well be it, yeah. Cheers, thanks for the input. Appreciate it. Next hand, um open ender, okay, we've seen that one. Do we remember? If it was, if it gets checked now or if it gets seabed? We looked up some queens uh a couple of minutes ago. Wait, where, where, where my window go? There, so I'm gonna go with the seabed as well. Hundred percent. And I would assume if you get raised here, we just get it in. Not only c-betting, but three betting as well, yeah. I'd say so too, right? Kings. Blocking two backdoor flush draws a little bit. Yeah, I go with the check as well. I think make the aces, kings, if we check here, uh make the kings aces and we check here always. Oh, I'd say this is maybe a check even hundred percent of the time. As except for the kings, we have nothing of relevance to this board. Yeah. Cool. Yeah, I think I'd bet this one too. And I'd say if we get raised here, we only call, right? What do we? It's not open yet. Um, oh, I didn't click the button, damn it. There you go. Poké bras, hey, 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 good to see you. Is it the same strategy for PLO fifty or do we change strategy on the rig structure? I'd assume post, I don't know if it makes a big difference post-flop, it makes a lot of, that's a, that I cannot answer, maybe somebody in the chat can. But it makes a difference in terms of the hands you play pre-flop. And it's a sizable difference, but yeah, we chose PLO five hundred because of decent breakback deals all on all sides that are play on. Yeah, we, uh, Chedimani is saying we call after the check raise, yeah. It's not good enough to get it in, but certainly calling. And it is the single raise part, so it's not like the pot size will be out of control even after a check raise. So does anybody know, does uh the rake structure make a big difference in Monker when it comes to post flop things? It does, okay. Okay, DeBoris is saying he actually looked into that. And even at the most drastic differences in rig, there's very little changes. So it looks like it's mostly affecting pre-flop. So go with the bet here, I would, I would assume, that's hundred percent, okay? Two pair, backdoor flush draw. Little changes change. Let's just kill a betting, uh checking. Interesting, I think I would bet it and if you get raised, I would probably get it in. Also, uh good to see you, Poké bra. Give you a shout out. Oh, I don't have a shout out for you. How come? How come you're not playing right now? Yo, yo is playing. Shout out to Gipperi as well. Um, I would bet here and uh what do you guys think if you get raised? I guess we get it in, right? Cause there are many turns that makes it hard to play, so it's much better to get it in uh right now and avoid any potential uh big, big mistakes on like wet turns. DeBoris saying apparently like PLO one K, PLO ten and differences strategy was two percent. Okay. That's awesome to know, uh, DeBoris, thank you for that. Just being facetious. So what do you guys say? What do we do against the raise here? I'd say we get it in, right? AM Triple T in the house, good to see you. We are studying cutoff versus big blind, we are in position, we are the cutoff, it is a single raise part, we are assuming um like lowish rig structure, PLO five hundred due to decent breakback deals. Shademan, he would call against the raise. Not that many safe turns, I don't know. Any other opinions? Like if we, we see that here ninety eight, like hundred percent of the time, fine. And we get raised, now what? Hmm. Interesting, I'll put the next hand up in the meantime. So two pair and The closest pre-flip ranges, because I will have much larger influence. Yeah. That I did, that I did. I chose the pre-flip ranges for PLO 500. Chedimani's c-betting here. Yep, me too. Pretty similar to the hand we just looked at. What's the last hand we had? 10 and 7. Yeah, and this one we actually have backdoor, uh, more backdoor straights as well. C-betting. This one gets checked at a decent enough clip. So there's some balancing going on here as well. The rap. Would also bet call that one. Yeah, that one. Yeah. Thanks for putting it out there as well. I I would too, for the record, in that one. Gippery going for the pot. Oh shit, I didn't start the poll, damn it. Betting there as well. Yeah, the the poll, sometimes I forget to click the button. It's, uh, votes only get counted if, like here in the overlay, you see the 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 poll window there. So unanimously betting and that is correct. What do you do versus a check raise? Not not on this one. I'd call. Yeah, I'd probably call, get it in on a non, like if he bets again, get it in on a non pairing turn. Victor Salvo would get it in right right away. That's also very interesting to me because I did notice that I'm a little bit too timid with reps. Also, the ace blockers are interesting. Yeah, I did consider the ace block, although, I mean, we're not I don't think we're seeing that many aces, but it's still nice to have, like once we only get called from the out of position player. Yeah, there's some bad aces, sure. So it's not a pure bluff. We do have a gutter. The ace plays differently, really? In what way? The gets played more aggressively. The solver likes to get it in more than with non, um, ace flushes, uh, reps. Oh, well, there. Uh, it's also non nut rap, king, queen, uh, jack eight, car, only cards. Also with the nutted one, uh, the solver would call and with the non non nutted one, it would get it in. Deboris, is that what you're saying? Oh, damn it. I didn't start the poll again. Jesus. So here I'm gonna go with the check myself. Of the check. It's okay, but it's more of a bet. So yeah, bluffing with the gutter. Fair enough. Yeah, okay, because it has better playability. That makes a lot of sense. Maybe better turns. Yeah, yeah. So here I'm gonna be curious about the answer from, uh, Sabre perspective because of the two backdoor flush draws. We go for, was the last hand a check? It was mostly a bet. It was 75% bet. 77 actually. Re-betting. Oh, you bet the last one. Okay, yeah. So I'm, I'm gonna go with what I would have done, but I'm, I'm, I have the feeling that the solver might bet this more than I would. Well, not more than I, well, yeah, that's actually still more than I would. So very much mixed again. But with more backdoor equity, more of a checking spot. Let's, um, yeah, let's check this one. Six, four. What do we have? Oh, already that. C-bet 70% in general. So already it's c-bet said more when we're double suited. Wait, no, that was dollar, that was suited. And really doesn't change that much in terms of, uh, the c-betting. So apparently c-bet's the very strongest, a little bit more often. And sometimes the weakest ones, well, weak, not, yeah, I guess the weakest ones that only have one backdoor flush. All right. Yeah, the the hand before that was 8865, uh, suited with hearts. Last one was single suited, yeah. Hang on, be back in a second. So in this one, we block an ace and a king. I guess have the six, um, maybe this is sometimes a bet, although we do have the backdoor flush draw. But I'm gonna go with the check myself. Let's see if it's 100%. It is 100% this time around. Um, again. Let's check this out. It's king, six, four. And do any get bet? Maybe once without a backdoor flush draw? Now again, there's so far the stronger ones. So once with, uh, two backdoor flushes get bet, some outliers here with, uh, the hearts, sometimes get back at a very, at a very mixed strategy. All right. The open ender. With the backdoor flush draw. So I'm gonna go with the check myself. And that's correct. This time we have, well, the open enders again. Oh, didn't start the poll. Duh. Man, I swear I'll get used to this at some point. I'm gonna go with the check here as well. Be curious to see it, what frequency the server does bet it. Not at all in this case. Top pair and the gutter turn nuts. Backdoor flush draw. And that eight is pretty important as well. Um, probably a bet, yeah? Curious to see what we do without the eight. I'll check up on that in a second. I'm gonna go with the bet as well. Probably not gonna be 100% bet, but maybe. No, gets checked 97% of the time. All right. King, queen, ten. Let's just go with all of them for now. Mix Aces. Yes, I do, a little bit. My devil in, uh, in it. But until they give me an option to take notes at replayer for Zoom, I probably won't put any meaningful volume in there. Queen ten eight, uh, ace, king, queen, ten, yeah. Bets mostly. Let's go with, um, a seven. Curious about that one. So with the, what was the frequency? So every bet 16%. The eight. It's actually a little bit higher. So which, which are we betting? Let's see. Again, the strongest ones, two backdoor flushes. But sometimes 100%, at least at a very decent clip. Can I fold by the probability? There you go. Okay. Okay, again, 100%, we bet the strongest ones with, uh, king, queen, ten, eight. And sometimes with hearts. So there seems to be a pattern in similar spots. When the solver decides whether to c-bet or not, that it goes for the strongest ones, uh, and then some weaker ones. And one thing that always shows up on a monitor on board is that the solver likes to mix in betting where we have two of the suits that are not on the board. I can't quite figure out why. Something to do with like reverse blocking, reverse unblocking, backdoor flush draws. But I, that's as far as I got, basically. All right. The rap and the backdoor flush draw. What's the move? No pair. But they haven't figured it out either. Yeah. Okay. That's good to, good to know. I'm gonna go with the bet myself here. We can call if we get raised. Could get it into. Because there are less good turns you want to see that can give you a flush draw. That I hadn't, uh, considered at all. There are fewer decent turns, yeah. Yeah? Oh, committed to memory. Thanks, legends. King high call, remember? Oh, a call versus, um, a raise, you mean? Yeah, yeah, right, right, right. True. So 100% c-bet here? We have a pair, um, the jacks. I think this is a bet, yeah. We would very much like to enter hand here, right? I remember, I remember mix Aces. I, 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 that was me, yeah, yeah. I, my name is not raising on party as well. And I think I prefer snap called as well. I was just very optimistic about me having the best hand, the way this hand went down. Yeah, c-betting here and c-betting 100%. Um, letting this one go against the raise, I would assume, like just snap falling. Aces with the open end are interesting. You have two suit not from the board. Yeah, the solver also does it with one heart, but I've seen the two hearts showing up there in the spots that have a mixed betting strategy a lot. And that preempts my other question. I think along the same lines, uh, Shadow, if I get raised here, I'll get it in sort of happily. Be interested to see if we're double suited. We can check that out in a moment. So I'm gonna go with the bet as well. It's, it's not the not open end. Yeah. There is that. You think the change is it enough that we, uh, bet call? So it's 100% bet. Yeah, bet call. Yeah, well. I think when we have the pair, it switches around. Um, yeah, let's actually, uh, check that out. First of all, I want to check out the is, uh, now we can't check reactions, never mind. Yeah, never mind. We have the pair. So if you have like kinking or queen with a 10. You're used to 50%. Yeah, okay. 50% BB. Yeah, then it's, uh, let get it in, sure. So let's see, Deboris is saying if you have a pair, it switches, switches around. We get it in with the quote unquote weaker, well, the weaker ones, kings and queens. And when you say when we have the pair, do you mean additionally a pair from the board or just a pocket pair? Pair in hand with the rap, yeah. So like a kinking, uh, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Like a kinking, uh, ten, seven, whatever, queen, queen, uh, ten, eight, uh, no, with a rap, so a kinking. Whatever. There's no kinking handed, has a pair and a rap. Wait, oh, pair in hand with the rap. Never mind, never mind. Now I got you. Yeah, now I got you. Yeah, like a king, king, queen, jack. Or a queen, uh, jack seven, uh, jack eight. King, queen, queen, jack, something like that. Yeah, yeah. Sounds good. Yeah, yeah. A queen, queen, jack, ten, yeah. Okay. So what we've seen so far, I'm gonna go. Yeah, queen, queen. Cheers. Thanks for clarifying. Is this another spot where the solver like likes to see where there's a bluff? But this time we really have no equity. Except for hidden at five, of course. So I'm gonna go with the check as well. Here's to see if it's a mixed spot again. Yeah, that's, that's what, um, Boris said, uh, Deboris said as well. Pair in hand with the rap. 100% check here. Cool. So we have two pair and the gutter and decent blockers, backdoor flush draw. So we have two pair and the gutter and decent blockers, backdoor flush draw. Didn't we see like mostly checking, some betting with this in a similar spot? I'm gonna go with the bet, uh, as well, because that's what I do at runtime. Wouldn't be surprised if we see a checking at some frequency. 100% bet. Bet get it in, yeah, yeah. Let's do this. Backdoor flush draw, blocking aces and kings. Um, oh, sorry, there's the starting pull button. I really appreciate, uh, Shadow that you put in what you would do against the raise, because that's something that I'm missing right now from the bucket tools. Something I generally I would love to have. Yeah, so personally I checked this as well. Uh, let's see if we're gonna be surprised by some bluffing here. Gee. There you, there you have it. Lover bluffs this all day long. Maybe c-bet actually, yeah. See if the 7 is a factor here. Ace, king, 7, 3. Let's go with the exact hand. Gets bet mostly as long as we have a backdoor flush, it looks like. Yep. And then take away the 7, make the 7, go with the 6 first. That is insanity, I agree. Sophie, um, hang on. What's the frequency? Okay, so the 7 is a huge factor. That's a very interesting. Make it an 8. It changes. Okay, with the 8, it's even, it's even huger. I know it's not a word, but I'm making it one then. So 100% betting, uh, blocking the 8. With the 7, it was like 80% betting, but the 6, it drops down quite a bit. To 40% only. If we go any lower. Just wanna see if maybe the frequency goes up to weaker handcards. Yeah, it does. So once we get a little bit weaker. That's interesting as well, because the 5, is the 5 relevance? I guess the 5 blocks the low reps a little bit. I mean, it doesn't block a straight draw on the board, but it blocks the hands that have a straight draw, 5, 6, 7, 8 type of hands. So with the 5, there's a 30% betting here. And if we l, take a, take away the 5, now we're not blocking straight draw hands at all, basically. Uh, again, it turns into more of a bluff. Ace, queen, 5, 3. That's an interesting one as well. And if you have the weakest ones, it's basically it's 100% c-bet as well. Interesting. Yeah, 97%, whatever. So let's go with the, first let's go with the ace, king, 5, 3 again, see the frequency there, and then we'll take the ace, queen. So here 30%. Wait. That's interesting, that makes it Oh, because then we have the queen blocker again, right? Yeah. So how about something, ace, queen, 8, 3. Probably even more of a c-bet then? Yeah, okay. Okay, so the bluffing frequency goes up as long as we block something that is in relation to a rap, to a, to a straight draw. Or if it's a really weak hand, ace, king, 3 deuce, 5, 4, or 4, 3, rather. Okay. Interesting stuff. Pair and open end are, no backdoor flush draws. But with the hearts again. So we're less interested in seeing a turn, I guess. But we do have the open ender. I wonder what this does to the frequencies here. Shadow would bet it, huh? I guess I at runtime, I'm always trying to think what I would do if I was playing right now. I would bet it as well, I'd guess. And it's more of a check. Way more of a check, actually. Checking is slightly more profitable, too. How about if we double suited? Okay, that changes it. To a c-bet 100%, basically 100% of the time. Even with hearts, interestingly enough. Except for if we have ace, hearts, ace and 10, so only a low, a low flush draw ourselves, yeah. Interesting. A pair, but two backdoor flush. So not a strong hand, but, uh, pretty decent backdoor draws. And the queen blocker, the 5 blocker. And the backdoors. So the backdoors in my mind always make it a little bit less of a c-bet, or no, actually a little bit more, right? And holding the queen and the 5. Maybe this is a bet here, but maybe I think if it wasn't double suited, we I don't know. I just don't know. So I'm gonna go with the check. But I'd be curious, I'm curious to see the frequencies here. Deboris going for the bet. Very much a mixed strategy in favor of betting. And it's on the whole across all the ace, queen, 9, 5 hands. Slightly more c-betting than checking. Uh, hang on, please. Maybe with poor runouts, we see that, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, the runouts. So double suited, okay, double suited makes it less of a c-bet here, just generally speaking. That's the c-betting frequency in half, basically. Okay, so with more backdoor equity, we're, um, we don't, yeah, we don't want to get raised off our hand, right? Gonna put up the next one and gonna be gone for a minute. Aces with two backdoors and the 8. Alright, I'm back. I'm gonna go for check myself, cut. Hmm. So what do you guys think? If we bet this one, how do we react to a 3-bet? Do we get it in or do we call? Gonna be tough to play, so is it bet fold? Is it bet get it in? With the two backdoor flushes and the overpair, do we bet fold here? Just a call. I mean, there are some decent cards. For sure, another deuce is fine. See if the board gives flush draw, the overpairs, yeah. Yeah. Sounds good. Thanks, Shadow. Just the open end or backdoor flush draw over pairs? Who isn't even going with the check? We have enough of it that we don't want to get raised off. And we have plenty of, uh, real weekends that we bet as a bluff, so it was a decent enough draw, backdoor flush draw in there as well. Check this one, and it's, um, mostly a check, yeah. Sometimes it gets bad, but I think once we're looking at 85, 15. I'm rare, so much stuff to learn now. In my head, I translated 200%, but that's just me. A set with the jacks. Shouldn't be any surprises. So here I'm kinda curious what you guys think if we get raised. Like, what do we do with the jacks and what do we do if, uh, we have deuces XX not blocking, uh, the jacks? Because we're getting, if we get check raised here, we're getting check raised significantly, uh, less often by raps, right? 1.5-ish, Deboris says. Curious to see if there's Oh, hey, I, I actually clicked the wrong button. I wanted to, uh, see that as well. But you're correct, Deboris, it's not 100%. And Shadow Manic just calling. Just calling, uh, towards the, you know, the, the, the additional question, what we do if we get raised, we get check raised. And what do we do if we have like ace, king, deuce, deuce? And we get check raised? Where we're unblocking straight draws? Or like, make it an, yeah, go with the ace, king, deuce, deuce. Versus the check raise. And I guess if we have like a ace, 10, ace, 9, deuce, deuce, we just get it in against check raise, right? Once we block a pair from the board as well. You still call? Okay. That's very interesting, very educational for me. I could wait and see if the board straightens, yeah. Well, okay. So this time we do have a backdoor flush draw. Have you seen the solver c-bet a lot of these hands as, uh, turn these into a bluff? Ooh, need to put up the poll. So I'm gonna go with the c-bet based on that, personally. And be curious to see if the backdoor flush draw makes a difference here. I mean, truth be told, I would have checked this hand, um, up until today, always. But if we've seen the solver bet here. Check, queen, king, um, king, jack, 6, 6. There we had the gutter, there we had some additional equity. Hmm, curious. No, it's 100%, okay. So how about without the backdoor flush draw? No, just 100%, okay. Needs more proximity. Okay. I remember the solver c-betting something like some 5, 5 hand. I think it was a king, 5, 5. What did we have? Hang on. But I might be misremembering, too. Oh, no, you're right, it was better proximity. It was an 8, 8, 6, 5, if we had a gutter on top. 7s, 8s, yeah. Check that. So that's 50%. Betting the weaker ones here, checking the stronger ones, where we have a rap on top. So it bets the, the weakest ones, basically. King, 8, 5. Got it wrong, 10 pushups. Oh man, that would be a good regimen to get fit for me. That deal. I did consider something like this today, but not do the pushups in camera, but every time I take a break, maybe do a few pushups to get the, the, the blood flowing. And with the 9s, it's even more pronounced, it's an 80% bet here. Alright, cool. And again, checks the strongest ones. Oh, well, the 9, uh, never mind, the 9s have a set, uh, from the board, okay? Let's go to the, to the 7s. How does that change? 30%? What was it for 8s? I think it was higher. Yeah, okay. So the proximity is a big factor. And again, I would assume with the 7s, we, uh, check the stronger ones as well. Two backdoor flushes here. Um, does that make a gutter? Yeah, that makes a gutter. Makes an open end, uh. Yeah, yeah. So bets the weakest ones, checks the strongest ones that have additional equity. The bottom set. No blockers of any relevance at all. So if the other one was mixed, I'm basically most excited, most interested, most interested guard to see the frequencies. C-betting can't be wrong. Last time it was, what, 70-ish? Was it? 72% with the jacks that we c-bet? Or that we no go? That, gosh damn it. Are you kidding me? Put it here so I can get back. Alright, um, c-betting. And this time it's much more of a mixed strategy. Very interesting. We also don't have a backdoor flush draw. Did we, with the other deuces, did we have a backdoor flush draw there? No. Loco Duke, thank you for the follow. Very kind. The three-card rap and all straights would give us the nuts, so this should be a c-bet 100% of the time and this is probably a spot where we get it in, Shadow, right? Or by extension, everyone else. Yeah, 100%. And if we get raised here on the rainbow ward, I assume we get it in. Uh, on a flush board, we probably get it in, right? Oh, right, 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 right. I forget, I forget, I forget. Right, 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 right. I remember. Thank you, Deboris. The weaker straight draws, we get it in, right? Like a queen, jack, 8, queen, jack, 8, 7. Um, jack, 8, 7, 5, something like that. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. By, uh, fewer outs, you mean fewer outs for our opponent? And what do you, oh, what do you mean? Oh, fewer outs for us. Okay. Not outs, yeah, we got the not outs. Queen, jack, 8 is a bit bigger rap. Oh, right, right, that's true. Good point. Hang on, actually, the king, queen, jack doesn't have the exact same amount of outs? Got all the eights, we got all the jacks. Oh, right, but we're blocking some of our own outs then, I guess. Yeah, okay. Whereas with the queen, jack, 8, we block fewer of our own outs. Alright, right, right, right. Yeah, yeah. That's a big difference. It's almost 50%. Well, it's like a third, actually, but still, that's huge. Alright. Honestly, I never considered that part, that some raps we block fewer of our own outs. Above, you're gonna actually, top rep is so pretentious. Alright, card above and below. That's a good way to keep that in mind then for future reference. Alright, alright. So I, among other things, I learned two really big things today already. Cool. Here, with two backdoor flushes, a pair from the board, and they gutter. Personally, I check this all day long. Be surprised if the... What the solver does. Let's just cut off betting here. Let's see. And it is a bet 93% of the time. I guess we're blocking enough of our opponent's raising ranges. So generally speaking, that's 72% that we bet with the 9-7-5-4. If we call against the raise, I would assume here. If we make this double suited, then the number actually doesn't change at all. The classic... What do you mean if we call against the raise? I thought with the two backdoor flush draws? Okay, okay. We only have it fold, okay? Learn three things. Cheers. What do you mean, we only have a double suited? Oh, yeah, here, yeah, never mind. I got it, I got it, I got it. Pre-flop, yep, yep, yep. True. Yeah, good point. Yeah. That makes sense. Absolutely nothing with a dash of a backdoor flush draw. I guess backdoor straight flush draw. So... Is this one of these spots where the solver puts in a bet as a bluff? Or is it just a straight-up check? Manic opting for the aggressive option. I'm gonna go with the choice that I would have done up until now on the tables, which would be checking. But queen and check this. Kipperi, stop this nonsense. Okay. Um, DeBoris, same with the queen, interesting. So what do we have? Yeah, queen, 5-4-3. Queen, 5-4-3. Very nice, DeBoris. Very nice. About a king-high flush draw. Probably only have this one double suited, so see if there... Okay, so there are some that we bet. Two backdoor flushes, the one with the hearts again. Strange enough at highest frequency. Has been betting, uh, jack, x2. If it's... Bet the queen, I'm probably, yeah. That's... Ah, we probably don't have the jack, 5-4-3 in the cutoff, maybe? I don't know. I don't know if we have this one. I'm delighted to hear you say that you don't know either in this case, DeBoris. Makes me feel a little bit better. Oh, that's not what I wanted to click. That's what I wanted to click. So we do have... Wait, 121%? Maybe we don't... What? Okay, let me check in the matrix. Of jack, 5. No. Hence these numbers here, maybe. I don't know what went down here. If you lose Manic, Kipperi, betting 121% with the five exclamation points, there you have it. I'm officially worried about Kipperi. And his sanity. Five exclamation points, man. Always does it for me. The open ender and backdoor flush draw weakened by the fact that we have three of them. But since it's about pattern recognition, I would agree that I would bet it too with the jack. If we misclick pre, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Excellent point, Boris. Can probably turn it on, Legend Skiller, that he can... Let's see, wasn't it somewhere? That he can... I can, I can do that. That he can enter two things. So I would check it here as well. Be curious to see if the solver does anything, but... No, not this time around, huh? Do we have a pair? Oh, two pair, actually. Top two and the king working as a blocker. The vote for three options. There you go. So that should work. Now, you can probably put in more than one vote. Can't believe we're opening that garbage in the cutoff? Three Broadway hands? I think even at PLO50RAG, we were opening that. Let me check. One of the button, for sure. Yeah. And it actually gets called versus the raise two. It was ace, 7, 6, 4, uh, yeah. Trip spades, exactly. And here, DeBoris called for a check. Oh, you were... Oh, that one, opening that one. Okay, I was really confused, Shadow. The... That's a good question. In the cutoff, I think in the cutoff, even triple suited, they do get raised. Let's check that out for PLO50RAG. What was it? 8-7? 8-7, 6-4. Not at PLO50RAG. Surge, hey, welcome back. Going for the bet here. I... You know what? At runtime, I would bet this as well. I'm a little bit uncertain now. Actually, right now, I'm favoring a check here, but I'm gonna go with what I would have done up until now, which is bet. Wait, where's that window again? Ah, dang, Jesus. And it is 95% of check. LocoDuke, hey, welcome to the channel, mate, and thank you very much for the follow. In the afternoons, we do a lot of study streams here, and otherwise, I stream and play PLO on a full-time basis. Currently running it out in the micros, PLO20. Open another instance of the bucket tool and open the cutoff range there. Uh, can do. Hang on. Alright. Just a second. Yeah. Um, so, open the cutoff range there. Cut off open range, okay? Put it on screen. Actually, let me move this away for the time being. And would be raise first in cutoff. Done. 32%. We can look up close hands like, um... Yeah, um... Oh, wait. 100% hands? Yeah, because break it... You're doing pre, right? So I need to, uh, yeah. Break it down into the fold and raise, uh, sure. Makes sense. So actually, here, we're gonna go with raise first in, cutoff. And then that would be fold. Oh yeah, that I need to. 100%, yeah. I see DeBoris' shadow. Where was post-flop range, uh, pre-flop ranges? Do we have 100% hands? Yeah, yeah, because we divided down here. Right. Shadow Boris. Okay, so we could go for the jack, 5-4-3. Keep in mind, we are looking at PLO500RAG here, where this might be... Apparently, this is an open. No. What other hand was it? Ace, 7, 6, 4. Yeah, thank you. Loving the no delay, man. Or stuff like that. Which ones don't get opened? Actually, that one, that's the exact one we looked at earlier. Okay, that one does open a decent clip. Doesn't always open, however. And they are profitable. Yeah, variable frequency, yeah. So the rainbow ones don't get opened, monotone ones don't get opened. Yeah, and that's it. What's TS? Oh, triple suited, right? I think the syntax might be different. Hang on. No, no, it is. You got it correctly. 95%. I got a king, queen. What do you mean, local? Works... Yeah, it's a syntax. EV0, yeah, yeah. Okay, folding it. Yeah, probably, right. Okay. Few more heads to go on that quiz there. Oh, sorry. I might have shown... I didn't go back to the regular view here. I hope you saw everything that you needed to see. I don't know if you did. My bad. Okay, this one we bet. I'm a tour. Oh, you're on a tour. Oh, as in you're playing a tournament right now, I assume? Hang on, where's the poll? Going for the next one? To Nutland. Oh, you lost. Oh, okay. So you had king, queen in a tournament. Sorry to hear it, mate. Top two with a seven. Nutland. Yeah, sounds a little less loaded if you had the nuts, if you had the S. Exactly. It is both. So top two, we hold a seven. And block aces. Well, it's not usually important, I guess. But maybe it is to the solver, because we... The big mind does have some weak aces that he didn't raise. Oh, I didn't start the poll, duh. There you go. So personally, I'm c-betting this all day long up until now. Curious to see if there are any surprises here. Not like 60-40, hmm? I think you might be right on that one too. Surge going for the option one as well. Only because of our seven blocker. Does it make it more of a c-bet then, the seven blocker? We'll check this out in a moment. Isn't the seven better for checking? Why? I thought it helps because we block, like, raising ranges. At least a little bit. So it's a 60-40. You're basically right on the money here, DeBoris, by the way. I want to reduce the probability of check raises. Well, doesn't a seven help in that regard? Would have checked 60. I am sorry. You just have no business playing high stakes, DeBoris. You're missing those 3% there. Back to the lab. Now, very impressive, sitting aside. Yeah, hence the betting, right? What I would do too. Oh, that would be my thought process behind betting. But very much mixed. And yeah, maybe it's time to invest. Not to invest, but to add a randomizer to a play. Ace of clubs helps too. That's a good point. That's a good point. Single suited, is it just SS? Yeah. And the ace of clubs, provided we have a flush draw in there as well. Yeah, will do. Cheers. Alright, so betting with ace, 9, deuce, holding no aces, no nines. I guess we can take out tens as... Oh, shit. 10-10 as well. We know flush plus call for checking on, um, on those runouts here. Sounds pretty good. So what are we betting? We're betting backdoor flushes, ace high, two flushes. The hearts again. So the one suited is not on the board. Run the bet for two pairs side from flush, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hmm, sounds good. So we better with a nut flush or double suited? Jesus was GTO. Thank you very much for the follow. Lot with flushes and, and, um, again, two hearts. Sovere just loves doing that, even if that result means that we have, that our flush draw that we do have is lower. So the dotted out card is the queen. So with the blockers and, but the better the blocker, the less interested the solver is in betting here apparently. So with the queen nine. Yeah, what's the difference here? Oh, here we're double, oh, no, here we're, um, no, we're double suited in both? I don't know, there's a huge difference here. I mean, it's just two specific hands, so it's not a big deal. There has to be some balancing voodoo. I don't get it. And there are a few more hundred percenters here. Oh, the ones with the set of deuces, yeah, okay. Set of deuces and not always a flush draw. The one with the hearts again, okay? And the ones with the nut flush draw. Okay. Do we have one last hand? No, we don't. So let's go through the hands that we did incorrectly. You understand, you can move from the filter, so for the remaining combos, if we can see, become more clear. That's a good point, so. That's a good point, so we could remove the ace of hearts, for example, cause there's something that the solver likes about that, um. Yeah, yeah, is king nine three combo checking. Alright, alright, that's a good point, uh, DeBoris. I'll keep that in mind. Yeah, so for example, we could, we could see that, uh, double suited ace ten nine deuce. Makes sense, we have the, uh, two backdoor flushes here. So we could just remove that one. Let's do that for shits and giggles. Uh, so that's diamonds, ten of diamonds. Well, we could just go with a double suited, I guess, ace ten, nine deuce. Double suited. Yeah, okay, I see. That's excellent. Cheers, Boris. Let's check out the wrongs, the, the, the wrongs. The wrongs we had wrong. And maybe hide that window? Well, not that window. Wait, no, everything is hidden? Hang on. Okay. Let's go with that then. Um, still put it in this one, so we can put up the poll again. So all we know is that, uh, at least I clicked the wrong one, doesn't mean that you clicked the wrong one here. They're gonna hide that window from me, so I don't look it up. I was, ShadowMining, I was honestly gonna say, uh, say when I saw the first song added Torn, I was like, there's only one song called Torn on this channel, and it's the Natalia and Bruglia one. However, whatever her name is. I almost said that. Almost threatened you with a ban there. I like that song. I like chicks and pop music. So checking here, um. Actually, I think I'm gonna go with the I still feel like I wanna bet it as a, as a bluff, so I don't, but now I'm, you know, in that in the trap where I'm like thinking, like, but that's, maybe that's what I thought last time, that's why I was wrong. So anyhow. Gonna go with the betting checking. Hundred percent checking. Whether if it had undercards, yeah, okay. Yeah. Here, Devon, I clicked wrong. I remember that. Top pair with the jack, um, probably a better, decent Probably a better decent clip, right? By the way, the version of that song with that mime, miming out the, the lyrics is one of my, is a video, uh, internet video I treasure. Bet no black, uh, check, no backdoor, uh, flush draw, yeah, check the rest, sounds good. Okay. Let's check it out with backdoor flush draws. Okay, so with two backdoor flush draws, the very strongest hands, get checked hundred percent. These two, the ones with the hearts, I, I never know, man. Just take it at face value right now. Standard seven, thank you very much for the follow. I don't know why that alert didn't play. Even weak backdoor flush draws, too weak. Yeah. Hang on. And once they get weaker, the mixed strategy starts to be around fifty fifty. Okay, so check the strongest one, bet the weakest ones. It's primarily a bluffing hand, yeah, I would think so, yeah. Except for the ten or the, or the ace, there are not, no turn cards that are really amazing. The jack is, could be trouble. If you had overcards, then it's another story. Yeah, like make the four, uh, queen, yeah, but then we, we'd be in rap territory. Alright. Make that four a king, yeah, I mean, then it's, then it's a rap. Well, that's actually an interesting one with the king, then it's not just, not a rap. Oh, local doot, sorry, I didn't see that comment there, uh, saying bet fifty percent. We're working with, um, soft spots, soft simulations from marker, and they weren't soft for the, the possibility of betting fifty percent, they were only soft for either checking or betting seventy-five. Okay, okay, okay. So. I clicked the wrong button here and check. Is this a bluff, or is this a check? Local dox is fold, open fold, yeah. Never was the cat's. Can't make up its mind. With the king, it, uh, it calls a check raise. Oh, like, um, right, 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 sorry, you're still on, on this one a little bit. Yeah, I would say probably. Well, it was a check, so when you say Hang on a minute, my car is driving me bonkers. Alright. Um. Yeah, I mean, I would still check it at runtime. Let's see, okay, cool. Or bet fold, yeah, but bet fold, they, it's check ten four. I hope I would fold at runtime, it certainly sounds appealing right now, and with the call with the king. Well, we also have more runouts where we can, uh, bluff, I guess. Scary hands. We had some scary hands today. This one, what was the deal here? I think it might have been one where the solver bluffs it. TheHugo, hey, welcome back to the channel, saying, I guess we are versus the big blind player donking, or is the CEO when checked head up? We are in position, so it's cut-off versus big blind, we open, the big blind calls, pre-flop, and then, uh, the big blind checks to us. Alright. So that, I think that was a, a bluff here as well. TheHugo, thank you very much for the follow, appreciate it, man. Old lady, never know. And that's a hundred percent bluff. One of the spots where I found it pretty incredible. Local do check, yeah, right, you know, I, I would check there all day long up until now as well. This is the spot where the solver likes to bluff. And we checked it out, if we don't have the seven, becomes less of a bluff. So let's go with the seven three first. I think it was like, okay, that was a very high frequency as a bluff. If we go with the eight three, even a better blocker to straights, it's even higher, a hundred percent, and yeah, the pattern is, if the blocker is not as valuable, then the betting frequency decreases and only increases again, like it even decreases down to the five, I believe. But once we make the hand even weaker, like four three, it, uh, increases again, cause it's, uh, more, better suited as a bluff. And we don't block any, uh, raps, rap hands. Technically, the five doesn't block any straights as well, but it blocks the hands that have the low raps, like five, six, seven, eight, and similar. So that was an interesting spot we came across earlier. Yes. IC1, hey, good to see you. Uh, TheHugo, yes, the solver, uh, top two, well, not, blocking aces and kings and then, and a nut suit. I think in MP we fold this with the seven three. Let me double check, let me check it in the matrix. Although right now I'm checking for PLO fifty zoom rake, not for PLO five hundred, which is what we assumed here, just to point it out for those of you just joined. Um, of course, the ranges are different in PLO five hundred. The reason I'm choosing that rake is that on all the sites that I play, I have ve, I have at least very, I have very decent rakeback on all of them, so effectively I'm not paying the rake that you would pay in PLO fifty zoom and stars. And I hope that's true for all of you as well, that you're playing with decent rakeback deals. So the ace, king, seven, three, let me check that out in the matrix. He does not, it does, again, that's PLO fifty rake here. Should go with PLO five hundred rake for the sake of the argument. Okay, go with mid-stakes rake. Should be zoom five hundred now. And then go for the MP first, ace, king. Seven three, even then, it does, it's the exact same picture as in, uh, zoom fifty rake here. You have to pre-flop instance open. Yeah, but only for the cut-off, I wanted to check it out for MP. But that's right. Yeah, but, uh, moving us one position over makes this a raise, and in this, in solver world, uh, it's a raise call or a raise fold. Which I don't think we would see in the, no, we don't, we don't, wouldn't see that in the, the other instance here in this case. Alright. It is, um, you know, it's not a big moneymaker. Actually, we can, we should, should check this out in the, in the second instance we have opened. This is, uh, the race first in for the cut-off here. And there's ace, king, seven, three, right? Yeah. Single suited. Let's see, and it's, you know, if you look at the EV here, it's completely neutral, so you're right, it's not a big moneymaker by any means. You think people cold-call too much, you can definitely consider folding it, yeah. Sounds good to me. As you see here, the EV is completely neutral. Dr. Zlou, hey, thank you very much for the follow. The doctor's in the house. Just fold if you expect multi, uh, piece of shit snowpods. Um, yeah, it's not a decent multi-hand, which probably, so what do you say, DeBoris, playing, you played some low stakes recently to try some stuff out? But you're just not bothered with the hand then, and just let it go? Seeing that, you know, at PLO twenty, even PLO fifty, I, I remember, you get into a lot of multiplayer situations. I'm looking at rainbow. Here in this one, I mean, no, I haven't done single suited. So the ones that are suited to the ace get opened here, and the ones that are not suited to the ace get folded. Let's see if that's true all around. Yeah. Yeah. Need to be suited to the ace. Table full of rags you can open, yeah, okay. Your place is a lot different leader than any other, than every other low stakes site. Really? What, how do you, how do you mean? Curious. I think I see a little bit more three betting on Rio. Might open it, yeah. People, people are a lot tighter on, on Rio. Which would make it more of an open than taking into account what Shadow says. Do we have another one that we messed up, or I messed up? So here. Much more tight deck roll, yeah, okay. People under three bet for sure. It was just the tables I was on the last couple of days. Yeah, granted, I was on a lot of crazy tables recently. But these are all probabilities. Um, these are the frequency at which we, uh, the solver would take this action, the percent, and this is the EV in big blinds. So. What was the deal here? Just increasing the chance of stealing the pot, yeah, yeah, on a tight table. So let's see, I personally, I'm gonna fold, but maybe there's another spot where I was wrong because the solver just turned it into a bluff. And that folder would check, I mean. And there was, those were all the wrong hits. Let's do a few more hands, I'm gonna call it, uh, this session, uh, well, a session, relatively soon, and be back with a poker stream a little more than one and a half hours from now, so make it another, uh, make it another ten minutes, maybe. And maybe, we just wanna go with Hang on, so I can show you here. Settings. Maybe we just wanna go with hands that are not huge moneymakers, so go with like more With hands that are not huge moneymakers, so go with like more marginal stuff. And maybe here minus, don't take the ones that would be clear folds, go with something like this, maybe. More marginal stuff then. You could lose from the, um, lesser probability, not entirely sure what you mean, yeah, I, I, no worries, I'm a creative reader. Well, that, it. If you mean that the percentage, that is how often you would take that option, how often you would mix it. Like if the solver says, uh, raise 50% of the time, then you had a 50%, it wouldn't be, it would be a check or a fold, whatever. So, a hand where we have, well, we have the six as a blocker, we have the queen as a blocker. You have the backdoor flush draw on the other hand, though. Is this a spot where the solver bluffs? Is it maybe one of the surprising ones where he bluffs, it bluffs 100% of the time? So, I'd go for it too, seeing what we've seen so far today, Shadow. Not saying that on the table up until today, I would have bet here, well, maybe sometimes, actually, sometimes I might have. It's not like there's any turn where you go like, yay, we turned this. For maybe the ace. So it's mostly a bet? Cool stuff. 6653, really unlikely to improve. So maybe another bet? My favorite is queen. Can be quite a nice hand. Yeah. Yeah, I think I'd go with the check here as well, I mean. Yeah. 100%. Jacks. And, um, jack high backdoor flush draw, again, not a spot where any runout is gonna go, gonna make us go like, yay. So personally, I'm gonna go with the bet here as well. Want to take it down right now, if we get raised, we pitch it, if we get called, we reevaluate turns. We have nice future blockers, like have an eight, a queen, a king roll off. Me, I, I personally, uh. Very often turn the jack, which just always has me desperate to what to do now. That's a good filter, by the way, you mean the, uh, EVs here, that we filter for, for, um, more interesting spots, closer spots? See, but 100%. That's where you usually get not hitting the flop, yeah. LocoDude, my chats are being delivered too late, um, not sure what's up with that. Give it a shot for the next one. Yeah, refresh the, the stream, maybe Loco. Thanks, Dboris. Again, slight, a stronger hand than the last one. Curious to see. Are there any good arguments for checking here? I kinda doubt it. What's the new EV filter? It's here that we, uh, filter the. Like the, the closest spots. We've unfiltered, like all the, all the hands that we show up with here, was from like minus 11 to plus 16 big blinds, something like that. ShadowManic checking here. So we do have the gutter. Honestly, at runtime, I would check this as well. Would check and, uh, would check two and, uh, bet two backdoor flush draws, yeah. That's 100% correct, let's go, let's check out the two backdoor flush draws. Skin, queen. And again, the one with the hearts, but at 100%. The dotted out cards are queens as always, um. Yeah, most, there's some mixing going on there, a lot of mixing going on there as well, but it leans towards betting. Aces with a pair from the board. That's good enough to bet. Can't believe you bucked to the sexist. I look forward to your emails. Check here. So we block a pair from the board, the part is nice, you don't block draws, well, the king actually blocks draws a bit, maybe that is enough to make it a bet. I, first of all, I'm interested to see if this is gonna be 100% strategy, 100% check, 100% bet, maybe. Um, that being said. I think up until now, I would have betted a lot. But I'm leaning towards a check now. And it is more of a bet. Alright, interesting. Hang on. Three, let's go with that first. And here, only, there's no 100% betting at all, some with the two backdoor, two backdoor flushes. So the nine is a huge factor. Okay, if we take the 10. Doesn't change that much, let's go for the nine and, uh, remove the king. And make the king like a deuce, so something that is of no relevance at all, actually make it, yeah, doesn't matter, make it a deuce or four. And then it's. The ones with the two backdoor, the ones with the hearts again. And if we remove the nine, have no pair. Then not at all, and if you just have the king again. Same, okay, that one we had previously, interesting, so. The king blocker makes quite a difference, right? Do we, no, just need to double-check here. If we remove the king, what was the outcome? Yeah, okay, then we very much either look in at mixed plays or the very best ones double, double, uh, suited, two backdoor flushes, okay. So the combination of a pair from the board and the king makes a huge difference, makes this a lot, makes this a bet a lot of the times. Smitty, what up? Nice to see you, sir. You're catching the tail end of the stream, I'm gonna go on me government-scheduled break, government-mandated break. The streamers union has that locked down. So we have, what do we have? We have the open end or two backdoor flushes? Honestly, I don't remember. That being said, seeing that as the table, I would, at the table, I would check it. So I'm gonna go with the one as well. LocoDude, does it work for you now? Can you vote? So go for the check, mostly checking, sometimes betting. I think, you know, once it's close to, once it's close to 90, 90/10 here, in terms of mixed strategy. I'd translate it to 100% personally. Um, just the gutter backdoor flush draw. Pretty weakened, but we do have the gutter, maybe sometimes a bet. I would just check it all day long. At this point, I wouldn't be surprised if there's some mixing going on here. Smitty coming in with the vote for the one as well. Yeah, I think so too. 10% betting, we're actually slightly, uh, plus EV. Towards, in a, you know, in a GTO environment. Compared to checking. A pair and little else, pretty weakened, that has a backdoor flush draw as well. Pacman, hey, good to see you. Nice to have you back. Oh man, if these study streams show me anything, then that, then that I am far off from being the PLO master, matter of fact, there are a bunch of people in the chat that are doing way better at this than I am. You always have one or the other more. Yeah. But I don't know, it pays to check up on the intricacies, yeah, um, ShadowManic, I check it all day long as well, curious to see what the solver does. Maybe it's the spot where the hearts make a difference, makes it more of a, that could actually be, from what we've seen. On Saturday, you flopped quite okay, that's true, that's true, Saturday went alright. The latter part of the stream, first one was horrible. Okay, 100% check, no surprises. That's the time, okay, one more hand, then I'm gonna call it a night. Top pair, I have the queen as a blocker and. Trip backdoor flush draw. I don't betting this. I got better too. Alright, alright, alright. Let's see. Mixed strategy leaning towards c-betting here, very interesting. Okay, so here's the deal, I'm gonna go on me break, get some food. Um, relax a little bit. And I'll be back in pretty much exactly 90 minutes from now with a tournament, or more tournaments possibly as well. Uh, cash games, and we'll take it from there. Hmm, probably another study stream tomorrow, I'll post something on Twitter, I need to figure out how I go, how it, the schedule will change going forward. With the Gelfon challenge being back on on Wednesday, I'll, I'll work it out, I'll let you know. Thanks, ShadowManic and OFG for being here, well, everybody for being here, for putting that into the chat, you're very, very nice. Um, let's head over to KomodoDragonJesus's stream, he only works with two cards. But if you're interested in playing. PLO in with two cards. Then his channel is a good one to check out, he streams, he plays and streams mid-stakes. Explains a decent amount of his start process as well, which I always cherish in the stream myself, he's a nice dude. On top of that. So let's give him a paper visit, he's a great guy. Streamers I really like on Twitch. Is it possible to do a non-ZOOM broadcast? What do you mean, OFG? I'll take a moment to, uh. Oh, wait a moment before I hit the stream, what do you mean? The, the only thing that Zoom, that is, has anything to do with Zoom right now is that the rake is based on, uh, Zoom on PLOs, uh, on PokerStars. So I'm not entirely sure what you mean. Right, so, yeah, other than that, I plan to stream pretty much all week. Okay, okay, fair enough, OFG. Yeah, so thanks for being here, everyone, and. See you later tonight, maybe see you tomorrow for study stream, or maybe the next study stream will be Wednesday, I'll figure it out, I'll post it on Twitter, post it on the Discord. And update the schedule in the channel as well. Peace, brother. Smitty, better good luck, thank you guys, you're very kind. Thanks for being around and making this a fun stream, I certainly learned a lot. I hope you found some value in it too. Until then. Cheers.